Okay. I've been told by Melissa we are ready to go, so let's go ahead and call the meeting of November the 10th, 2020 to order. If, Melissa, you'd be so kind as to call roll.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Here.
Mayor Medina?
Here. Once again, colleagues, if you, if we could all rise and help lead in the pledge. I pledge allegiance-
I pledge allegiance to the flag- of the United States of America-
and to the republic-
for which it stands-
which stands-
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Let's go ahead and move on to item three, public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals are allowed up to three minutes. And as the council policy refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate, the Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Do we have any speakers this evening, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, we do. Malcolm Robinson. Bring him in the room now.
Can you hear me now?
Hi, Malcolm. Can, yes, whenever you're ready.
Hi. Hi, my name is Malcolm Robinson. I am a 31-year San Bruno resident. My comments tonight are related to the overall utility bill charges. I had a Whopper this time, $472. So I went back to, since 2013, and looked at my average water bills. What I saw was they, starting in 2013, they were about $292 a month with a high of 314, low 270. And it stayed that way, and it really went down during our drought years. We had severe drought, as you recall, down to an average of 261 a month. 218, I started using more water. And we garden here. We have tomatoes, carrots, cucumbers, snap peas, and I have trees on my back hill I need to water. So water usage went up the last few years, but it's crept up. It's gone up. This bill, which includes garbage, sewage water, has gone up about 10% a year. Except for this last year, this year, granted, we're showering more at home, we're working from home, so we're using more electricity, more water. But that's a 22 rate, $22, 22% rate increase. So my average utility bill for San Bruno this month, or this year, is $414, which is really high compared to 213. 2013, it was 292. So I would ask that you guys, you know, manage these costs and rates. There's been a lot of talk on Nextdoor about how these rates are calculated and their averages or something. You know, I would prefer that, you know, my actual water usage accounted for my bill, not some average or something. But I would ask that the city council and the city manager take a look at this. Last summer, at one of our concerts in the park, I asked the city manager about that. I tried to lay the, you know, the guilt trip, you know, I'm a senior citizen on a fixed income. He wasn't buying that. He said if, and I quote, "If I couldn't afford to live in San Bruno, I would have to move." Now, that was kind of a harsh rejoinder. You know, I've lived for 31 years, and I want to keep living here for a while longer. And I think as a city, we need to better manage utilities and the costs. So please help us with that. There's a lot of citizens that are in the same boat as I am. Now, I'm a senior citizen on Social Security, so what can we do? What can I do to help keep rates low, keep costs low to the consumers in San Bruno? If you have any ideas or any ways that I can help you with that process, please let me know. And I wish you all luck. And congratulations on the reelection for Michael and Rico. And good luck on this next term. Thank you.
Thank you, Malcolm, for your comments, and thank you for your willingness also to engage and be a part of a solution and stepping forward to help out where you can. Thank you. Any other comments?
I currently see no other hands raised.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number four. Item A, declare November 30th through December the 6th of this year as United Against Hate Week. San Bruno stands against hate and is committed to making everyone feel safe and supported against acts of racism, intolerance, and hate. But this is something that the city of San Bruno spearhearted in the county of San Mateo with other agencies and jurisdictions, with the Board of Supervisors, and so we will be on that path. You have Vice Mayor Salazar and Councilmember Mason, who are on the City Heart Committee, who have met a couple times. And so on the November 24th meeting, we're bringing forward an official proclamation, and then they can report out on activities in these COVID times, but what we can do and what we shouldn't. So with that, we'll move on to item B. Receive update on COVID-19 response efforts. And I'd like to turn it over to Jennifer, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We're just going to pull up the presentation quickly. My name is Jennifer Damos, and I'm here this evening recommending our EOC Public Information Team, and will present a local update to you on COVID-19. I will briefly touch on our county statistics, our status on the blueprint for a safer economy, local COVID-19 testing, provide important updates on the county health orders and recommendations, including the much anticipated recommendations for the holidays and travel. I'll also mention a new grant opportunity for local small businesses, and will then be available for questions. Our local statistics include 551 cases in the city of San Bruno. This number is as of last Friday, November 5th. In our county, there are a total of 12,049 cases of COVID-19 and 165 deaths as a result. Dashboard data is updated regularly on the San Mateo County Health website, and this data is as of November 5th. Our status on the blueprint for a safer economy remains the same. We are in the moderate or orange category. That means that this time, there are no changes to business allowances and indoor operations remain the same from what was previously reported. Many of these COVID-19 updates have included testing information, and the county is really making a strong effort to increase testing and testing awareness. The city of San Bruno has partnered with the county to provide a local testing site to our community. This is an opportunity to bring testing to the community and not have the community go out to find testing sites. It's a great way to get those residents that may or may not get tested for COVID-19 or have a means to get to a testing site. Our local site is at 530 Huntington. It will be in operation on Saturdays while tests are available. The current schedule is from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., however, this schedule may or may not be adjusted depending on test availability. Information about the site, including dates and times of operations, will be on our website, and you can easily access that at sanbruno.ca.gu/localtesting. Pre-registration is preferred but not required. The test is self-administered, and results are available in one to two days. We conducted a soft opening of the site last Wednesday and an official opening this past Saturday. There were approximately 80 individuals that came to be tested. The tests are free. Insurance information is requested if available, just to have a means to recover some of the cost for the actual test itself through the county. However, it is important to note that insurance is not required. The test is really simple. It is completely self-administered. You check in on arrival. You watch a short video on how to administer the test. It can be viewed from home if you do pre-register. You cough into your elbow three times with your mask on. You swab the inside of your mouth for about 20 seconds. Put the Q-tip swab into the provided tube, seal it into the provided plastic bag, and drop it into a collection bin. It's important to note that for this test, you cannot eat, drink, or smoke 20 minutes prior to the test, as it may affect the results. And this test can be taken by anyone the age of five or older. Alternatives remain the same for testing. The county's mobile site is available to those who are of the age of 18 or older. It's also free to county residents or those that work in the county. Appointments are required, and once an appointment is made, the location will be provided. The mobile testing site will be in San Bruno on November 16th and 17th from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And lastly, the county continues to provide testing at the San Mateo Event Center, which requires an appointment, and that's through projectbaseline.com/covid19. Next, I will review a few important changes to our local health orders and recommendations. On October 30th, our county health officer, Dr. Morrow, further aligned our local health orders with COVID-19 guidelines of the CDC, and specifically regarding quarantine and isolation. What's the difference between quarantine and isolation? Many have asked. Quarantine is used to keep someone who might have been exposed to COVID-19 away from others. Under the revised health order, one must self-quarantine for 14 days if they are notified or made aware of close proximity with an infected COVID-19 person. Isolation keeps someone who is infected with the virus away from others and should remain in isolation for at least 10 days after they first begin to develop symptoms, or at least one day after, excuse me, and at least one day after recovery. A link to the order is on the screen and can be found on the county's website at smcduke.org. On November 2nd, Dr. Morrow revised the visitation guidelines for the long-term care facilities to expand indoor visits. Indoor compassionate care visits may now be provided for a resident who was living with family before recently being admitted and is struggling with change, a resident who is grieving after the death of a friend or family member, a resident who needs encouragement with eating or drinking and is not experiencing weight loss or dehydration, or a resident who used to talk and interact with others and is experiencing some emotional distress, including seldom speaking or crying more frequently. These visitations were very limited in recent months since the original order in March. But there are several requirements in order to visit long-term care facilities for concerns of spreading COVID to a more vulnerable population that is more susceptible to contracting COVID. So it is important to call ahead and find out what those restrictions are at any given facility or make an appointment for a visit. A link to this order is also on the bottom of the page there, and it can be found on the county website, smcduke.org. And finally, the much anticipated safer holidays and travel. While virtual celebrations are highly encouraged, if you gather in person, it's recommended to keep it safer, small, short, and stable. So gathering outside and following safety guidelines, limiting gatherings to no more than three households, limiting gatherings to no more than two hours, and to not participate in multiple gatherings with many different households. Travel is recommended to be avoided, especially non-essential travel. You should not travel if you are sick or have any symptoms. If you do end up traveling, it's strongly recommended that you self-quarantine upon return and that you plan ahead. You ask yourself the questions, is COVID-19 spreading where you're traveling? Are you or your travel companions at higher risk for serious illness? Will you be able to social distance from others during your trip? And can you wash your symptoms and get tested? This is all in an effort to keep our friends, families, and communities safer. And of course, we should all remember to always keep your mask on while visiting and wash hands frequently. Next is another great opportunity for small businesses in San Bruno. The Bay Area Entrepreneurship Center of Skyline College is now offering micro grants of $3,000 to San Bruno-based businesses, and this is an effort to help aid in their recovery from the financial impacts of COVID. Grant applications can be submitted November 23rd, December 4th, and there are eligibility requirements. Those requirements include applicants attending a micro grant info session. The info session will be held on November 12th and 17th at 6:00 p.m. via Zoom. You can attend one, not both, info sessions. There is a link on the screen to register for questions, or excuse me, to register, or questions can be emailed to baec@smccd.edu. On behalf of the BAEC, I extend their appreciation to City Manager Brogan for participating as keynote speaker during the recent Small Business Symposium. It demonstrates our continued partnership through this pandemic to support our San Bruno community. And lastly, I remind everyone to please stay connected, sign up for SMC Alert for emergency notifications here at first from us, and follow us on social media. That concludes my presentation this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I know there was a lot of information tonight. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Jennifer, for the information, the detailed report, and the update. And is there any questions from colleagues? Okay, I'll go with the real hands. Councilmember Medina? You're pointing, you're pointing this. Oh, there we go. Now goes where? We'll go Councilmember Mason, then Councilmember Medina.
Mayor, quick question. I have been contacted by businesses that are getting, starting to get notices. That's a requirement of the commercial eviction moratorium that this council passed. And the notices are obviously for back rent. And so my question is, what is being done to make sure that the businesses are aware of this grant opportunity? I've been sending the link honestly left and right to anybody that I've been contacted by or that I know and I have their contact information for. But for other businesses, what outreach is being done?
Councilmember Mason, your question is about this grant program. They did announce it on social media. The Bay Area Entrepreneurship Center does have staff that are walking the businesses downtown and around San Bruno to let them know and reaching out to them through their Business Assistance Program that has been funded by the San Bruno Community Foundation. We can ask that question and ask that they provide the city with additional information on how they will be advertising the grant program, but that is what we know today.
Great. And can it be added to the city's website as well? Please.
It's in process of being added to the city's website, and it's already on Channel One.
Councilmember Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just confirming that 530 Huntington is across the street from Artichoke Joe's Northern Entrance. There's some people that just were kind of really confused of what that was. There's, they looked it up, but just wanted to clarify that and maybe to get that point a little clearer for the public during the next notification periods that we're going to be going through. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennifer. Can you clarify that, please?
I can, Mayor. Thank you. Yes, the parking lot is adjacent to Kowtring. It's the linear parking lot on Huntington. It's actually south of Artichoke Joe's, and it's not on San Mateo Avenue. It's on Huntington. We have large white tents that are put up, and so it's very visible from the street. Anyone that walks by or drives by will see the operation in full effect.
Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mayor Medina. So now that the election is past us, I'd like to see, and I, maybe staff's already working on this, and getting some more information out. We're doing some type of communication too, but there's so much stuff that we were bombarded with during the election. I mean, it was an overwhelming amount of stuff in the mailbox, but getting communication out to the public again, because as Councilmember Mason indicated, you know, there's programs out there that are really not getting utilized, and that's an unfortunate thing, and not really everybody's on social media. I know that's how we communicate, but, you know, is it, is it time once again to start working on something, to get it out, to let people know all the resources, especially financial? You know, things that we can start providing some really good information. And we did, we did a great job the first time that came out.
Councilmember Davis, so you're right. We did do a dedicated COVID-19 mailer to all addresses in San Bruno early during the shelter-in-place. We do have a draft of a second mailer. We actually held back due to all of the mail that was going out during election time. And so we will be finalizing that and adding both programs that the city offers and other resources that are available to not only residents but also businesses, and we'll send that out. I did not know at the time it is late November or early December, but it will be this calendar year.
That's perfect. And then just my final comment was just some really good feedback on the testing site, so thank you. And I, and I, are you still in need of volunteers?
At this time, I think we have a sufficient staff setup. Depending on demand, we would appreciate the opportunity to include volunteers. So if you have any volunteer interest, I request that you forward them to the city manager's office attention and to myself, and I'd be happy to accommodate a court meeting in that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and excellent report.
And then just for me, I also want to thank staff, because obviously you've been going down to San Mateo Avenue and other places to drop off flyers and posters to educate and alert the community to the COVID testing site that occurs on Saturday. So once again, Jennifer and team, and thank you for doing Wednesday. Thank you for the staff and the team doing Saturday, and appreciate it once again. We'll move on to item number C under announcements and presentations. Receive annual report from the Parks and Recreation Commission. And my understanding is that Chair Mike Palmer will be coming on in and just telling us all that's happening even in these challenging times.
I'm bringing Mike into the room now.
Hey. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Medina and members of the city council. My name is Mike Palmer, and I currently serve as the chairperson for the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'm here tonight to present the commission's annual report for the 2019-2020 fiscal year and outline the work plan for 2020-2021. Our agenda tonight will be an introduction of the commission members, the commission's purpose, the 2019 commission accomplishments, and the 2020-2021 commission goals. On this slide, you see our commission after one of our meetings in 2019, and all of the commissioners are there, and I'd just like to take the time to mention them. Chris Gonzalez is the vice chair, Lori Greenberg, Jessica Martinucci, Alexander Melendez, David Nigel, Lucy Zamaitea, Michael Zastro, and Nadia Koshafa served as our student representative. And I thought it would be interesting to see what we look like after one of our meetings this year, and this is a Zoom meeting. And you can see that some of us are looking pretty good there. This slide shows the purpose of the commission. The commission is responsible. The commission is responsible to make recreation, recommendations to the city council regarding community recreation needs. And these can include an input on recreational activities, an input on various classes and programs offered by the Recreation Department, input on the use of recreational facilities and equipment, and input on the operation, supervision, and maintenance of playgrounds, athletic fields, the community swimming pool, indoor recreation activities, auditoriums, and other facilities designated for recreational use, with the exception of the senior center. The senior center, as you know, has its own advisory board. This slide lists some of our accomplishments for 2019 and 2020. I'm not going to bother with running through them right now, because I'm going to discuss them in more detail as we move through our report tonight. So slide seven. This slide shows two views of a conceptual design that has been developed as a result of the input gathered for the city's new Recreation and Aquatic Center. The Parks and Recreation Commission continues to provide input for this exciting new project in a number of ways. Commissioner Chris Gonzalez and Mike Palmer will continue to serve on the city's advisory committee for this project as representatives of the Parks and Recreation Commission. The advisory committee also consists of members of the city council, members of the Community Foundation, city staff, as well as representatives from Griffin Structures and Group Four Architects. Advisory committee meetings took place on December 11th of 2019, April 2, September 10, and September 14 of 2020. In addition to the city's advisory committee, Commissioners Jessica Martinucci and Lucy Zamaitea continue to serve on a subcommittee in conjunction with the city's Culture and Arts Commission to explore ideas for creating options for art to be located in and around the new Recreation and Aquatic Center. Additionally, at its May 11, 2020, meeting, the commission received a presentation from Group Four, which outlined the progress that had been made. The commission was very appreciative of the presentation from Group Four. Several members of the commission voiced their favorable impressions of this exciting new project. Hold on. We're having a minor technical difficulty here. There we go. Okay, this next slide is Lerafield Grandstand upgrade and improvements. On this slide, you see some pictures of the grandstands at Tom Lerafield. The stands on, I mean, the picture on your left shows the stands as they were, and then the picture on the right shows some of the work being done. The work, this work will include removing or replacing the old bleacher seats, applying a sealer to all cracks and openings in order to make a watertight seal so that the areas underneath the bleachers do not have water intrusion, a complete paint job, and replacing old windows and doors on the areas located underneath the bleachers. The commission has received several reports and updates, and will continue to be involved in this as this project moves forward. The next set of slides, slides nine through 12, that we're going to show you tonight, will show improvements that have been made to several of the city's parks. All the improvements that are depicted have been made by city staff and are the result of recommendations from park users or from members of the Parks and Recreation Commission as they conducted their yearly visits to a park. This first slide shows La Mita Park. It shows the old trash container and then the new trash and recycling containers that were placed on a new cement pad that had been installed. This slide is a before and after of the basketball hoops at Grundy Park. The project involved a new coat of paint for the backboards along with new hoops and nets, and we've found that our, the basketball courts, our outside basketball courts get a lot of use, so this was a really welcome addition. And slide number 11 shows the old trash receptacle at the Herman Pot Life and the installation of a new cement pad trash receptacle and a new recycling receptacle. I just, I just wanted to note here, remarkable to note how much better the smaller parks, such as Terman, La Mita Park, appear with the installation of the new trash and recycling container. Slide number 12, review, we reviewed and revised the work plan for Florida Park and participated in the soft opening of the Florida Park Open Space Grass Area. On Saturday, October 3rd, the city conducted a soft opening for the new Florida Park Open Space. Its long-awaited opening was well-attended by members of the city council, neighborhood residents, city staff, and members of the Parks and Recreation Commission. The event was also covered by San Bruno City Net Services, which filmed the event and collected testimonials from many of the folks in attendance. The slide on the left shows the, shows the park as it looked for the soft opening. The heart-shaped areas were a nice touch and have been marked on the grass to allow for proper social distancing. Slide in the middle shows the Dry River that was installed by city staff. This is a cool feature, which gives the park some added character. And then the slide on the right shows one of the activities that was conducted during the soft opening, and it included an invitation to those in attendance and the neighborhood, provided them a chance to show off their artistic talents, like painting rocks for the Dry River. the Dry River. And the slide on the right shows a pretty nice painting. Slide number 13 involves the relocation of the reflection sculptors. The construction of the new recreation and aquatic center will force the city's reflection sculptor to be relocated. In addition to serving on the subcommittee for new artwork in the Recreation Aquatic Center, Commissioners Zamaatia and Martinucci also participated in some committee, excuse me, also participated in subcommittee meetings with the Culture and Arts Commission to determine a suitable location for the sculpture to be relocated. At its June 17, 2020 meeting, the commission received a report from staff detailing the new location for the reflection sculptor. Commission approved the recommendation and referred the matter to the city council for final approval. The picture on the left shows the reflection sculpture in its current location, and the picture on the right shows the newly recommended location, which is in the grassy area near the southwest corner of the tennis courts. Commission felt this was an excellent area, and I want to thank both Commissioners Zamaatia and Commissioner Martinucci and the Culture and Art Commission for their work and this recommendation. Nice job. Hold on. There we go. The next couple of slides talk about the city's ADA transition plan. The commission received reports from the city staff on the city's multi-year ADA transition plan. This, this slide shows one of the projects completed by city staff in the 2019-2020 fiscal year. This is a picture of Seventh Avenue Park and demonstrates the addition of more material, which is called Five Bar in the playground. Five Bar was also added to the following parks: Commodore Park, Grundy Park, Pacific Heights, Buckeye, Lyons Field, Lamita Park, and Seventh and Walnut Park. Another project that the city staff completed for the ADA transition plan shows the installation of new gates at Diamond Two and the tennis courts. These new gates feature a kick plate at the bottom of the gate so that people with mobility impairments can open the gate for access to the facility. Next couple of slides are going to show some of adopted park partnerships that were completed in the last fiscal year. This slide, part of the responsibilities of the Parks and Recreation Commission is to review and make necessary recommendations for any adopted park projects that are brought to the city and/or other commission. This past winter, the city was fortunate enough to receive requests for projects at Tom Lerafield and Diamond Two and City Park and at Greenberg Field and Commodore Park. This slide shows some work that was performed at Tom Lerafield and San Bruno Park. The adopted park project was a collaboration between city staff, San Bruno Youth Baseball, the San Francisco Seagulls Baseball Academy, and the San Francisco Giants. The work included regrading the infield, removing and flattening the outfield lip of the grass area, realigning all three bases, and the installation of approximately 100 tons of infield dirt that had been donated by the San Francisco Giants. As you can see from the before and after pictures, the condition of the infield area at Tom Lerafield was greatly improved. This slide shows the before and after pictures at Diamond Two. Much of the same work was also done on this field, but only 50 tons of material were added to the infield at Diamond Two. Before moving on to the next slide, I'd like to acknowledge several folks who made this very big project a reality: Mark Kaviglia and the staff from the Seagulls Academy, Greg Elliott from the San Francisco Giants, the park staff for the city, and Dave Stagnaro and the board from San Bruno Youth Baseball. And then the last project that, the last adopted park project was a project for Greenberg Field at Commodore Park. City staff in conjunction with San Bruno Youth Baseball installed a new concrete pad and placed a new storage container along the first base side of Greenberg Field. And as you can see from the pictures, the old storage container had definitely served its purpose, and the new container purchased by San Bruno Youth Baseball and donated to the city is a welcome addition to this field. Okay, this last slide is the work plan and goals for 2021, and the work plan includes, but it's not limited to, continuing to work with Group Four Architects and Griffin Structures on the development and construction of the city's new recreation aquatic center, Florida Avenue Park Development Project, continue to conduct park visits and to help facilitate and make recommendations to staff for park improvements, collaborate with the San Bruno Lions Club on renovations to the concession stand at Tom Lerafield, continue to provide support and input on the city's ADA transition plan for year-two projects for parks, provide input and support to the city on the completion of a soccer field feasibility study, and finally, provide input and support on the formation of a task force to study a new plan for walking trails in the Crestmore Canyon area. That's going to be the end of the slideshow, and before I ask, I make myself available for questions, council approval, I'd like to make one additional comment on an item not included in this report. On behalf of the Parks and Recreation Commission and the city in San Bruno, it is my honor to acknowledge the contributions made by Dave Nigel to the city. As you know, Commissioner Nigel currently serves on both the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission. It's hard to, it's hard to believe this. I have, still have trouble wrapping my head around this, but Dave is celebrating his 50th year as a Parks and Recreation Commissioner. It was in high school, and Mr. Nigel began his term on the commission. His commitment to our city cannot be described in words, but measured in time and knowledge. I'd like to congratulate Dave for his service to the city. We are all very fortunate to be able to call him one of our colleagues and a friend. Thank you, Commissioner Nigel. But that's, will conclude our annual reports to the city council. Thank you for your time, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have for me tonight.
Thank you, Chair Palmer, and Mr. Nigel is watching, along with some of the other Parks and Recreation Commissioners. So first and foremost, as mayor, thank you to all of you and the staff for the work and the presentation that you've given us, and we're going to open it up to Councilmember Davis.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Palmer. Great presentation. You know, the pictures actually don't do justice for the things that have been improved and replaced. A lot of rusted, rotted, and in dire need, things that we've had in place for many, many years, I think well before Dave started as a commissioner. So really good to see some of those improvements happening and really good to see that the commission still kind of gets out there and makes sure they do their annual park inspections. And so, you know, the park is, especially San Bruno Park, it is one place that so many community members use, and it's, it's, you know, they can, the changes that are being made, it's going to definitely continue to be just a beautiful park and a place, basically a little gem in our city, so thank you for that. And to Dave Nigel, I can't thank him enough for his dedication and his years of service commitment in San Bruno. 50 years, wow. Mike, you were in high school?
I was in high school.
I may have been in diapers, I'm not sure. Or celebrating my kindergarten year, but congratulations and really appreciate those years of service to the community. And it does help to have some knowledge, and so it's always a pleasure. And the other thing I'll always learn from Dave is how polite, considerate, he is just the nicest man that I know. So thank you for just your leadership in teaching me how to be a better person.
The questions or comments, Chairman colleagues, Councilmember Medina.
Yes, congratulations, Commissioner Nigel, amazing. That has to be a record somewhere, 50 years, on two volunteer organizations. And Chair Palmer, wonderful job. The ball field looks fantastic with the bleachers going to be put in there, and then eventually the concession stand to get fixed. It will be just a shinier gem in San Bruno, so thank you for everything you're doing, and look forward to playing baseball in 2021.
Absolutely. Okay, seeing no other hands up, I know we have a member of the public, Ms. Robinson, is, and if he can be brought in and...
Can you hear me now?
Malcolm, can you hear us?
Yeah. Okay, I love the work you've done in the city park. We go there a lot. I used to play tennis there when my knees could handle it. We go there for water aerobics, I go 10 times a week, the two months it's open, I love it. And I look forward to the new swim rec facility. So the question I've been asking for three or four years on that is, will the water be deep enough to dive in? We have diving boards, please consider that because it's an important part of swimming and learning to be in water. Regarding city park, are there any plans for a concert or theater area in the park? Today we have concerts in the park, it's a nice sloping. What's missing is a stage or something. Any plans for that? And also, west of 280, there's Portillo Highlands Park, Quewood Park, Pacific Heights Park, and I wish you'd think about doing things there. You mentioned briefly Crestmore Canyon Trail. Personally, I call it San Bruno Creek Canyon because that's the namesake of our town running through there. And, you know, the Crestmore guys, while they bulldoze the top of the hills to really fill in a lot of that canyon, so it's kind of a misnomer to call it that. So I offered, I told Councilmember Medina last summer that if you guys built a trail on the area that was recently cleared by the fire department, that I pay for a park bench specifically overlooked, there's a place at the north end, down below Stratford School where you can see across the bay, it'd be a great place for a bench. I, that offer still stands, so if you build that trail, a lot of us will start going there. And I like the work you've done, and last but not least, I would like to echo everybody's comments about David Nigel. He is truly a great man, and what you said about being around him, making you a better person is certainly true, and I thank him for all the work he's done for San Bruno. And I'll take my questions off the air.
Thank you, Malcolm, and yes, staff hopefully has written those down and can follow up. Unless, unless the chair staff wants to comment or get back to Ms. Robinson. Okay, what I also want to include with the chair's permission is just that we have a new employee in the Community Services Department, which is the new director, and this is her second day. And so, though she's not, doesn't have a particular item, it was important for her, she's here at City Hall, and she wanted to stay throughout the meeting, and so, on behalf of the city, the community, and all. And Mafola is our new Community Services Director who started Monday, so it is the second day, and she's here. So that's, that's good news for us and good news for San Bruno, and I was, I had the opportunity to meet her, so I want to welcome her and thank her, and we wish her and the department much success. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. Are there, there's items A through D, is there any item that council wants to have removed for a separate vote? Not seeing any? Is there any item that council wants to have comments on or have a follow-up question? Councilmember Medina.
Yes, Mayor Medina, just wanted to clarify during my council comments for, for the minutes, the young man Riley Gibbons, he was the person who organized the two community cleanups during the last few months, and I wanted to make sure that he was acknowledged. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items? Seeing none, is there any action on consent items A through D?
I think Linda has a question.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I think City Manager Grogan has a response to last month's question around the $18,000 to Star Vista, and I wanted to provide him the opportunity to respond.
The city manager, Grogan, is that accurate, that you want to make some statement under consent?
Sure, I, I can do that. At the last meeting, Councilmember Mason asked a question on one of the invoice items. It was a $18,000 invoice paid to Star Vista. The question was inquiring on what was the rationale for that invoice. Staff could not provide the answer at that time. It was subsequently researched, and the answer for the council and the community is the city, since 2012, as far back as our payment system went, has supported Star Vista and the First Chances Program, which is a sobering station for people that are arrested for DUIs. And so, we have a memorandum of understanding with Star Vista through the police department, and there are two payments for each half of the fiscal year of approximately $18,000. I believe that invoice was $18,300 and some odd dollars, and it is a program that, is a county-wide program that is open 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, and available to people in our community for a first chance as a sobering station.
Thank you. I would also would just highlight, thank you, City Manager Grogan, just highlight that it's also an intervention station, so if you do get pulled over, there's intervention resources available to you at that time, at the time of booking. So I was, I was really pleased with the response and happy that we're part of it. Thank you.
Okay, any actions on items A through D with the one from Councilmember?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to public hearing, item A. City Clerk?
Item 6A, hold a public hearing to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance to approve a second amendment to a previously approved 1996 development agreement for a portion of land commonly known as Bay Hill 8. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement regarding subsurface improvements in the right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. We're going to have, I think, a couple speakers. City Manager, did you want to start, or are we going to turn it over? Ms. Wu, or?
Members of the city council and the public, I'll introduce Pamela Wu, who is our acting community and economic development director. She will provide this presentation with Kelly Biggs, a contract senior planner for the city of San Bruno that is working on this project. This is a development agreement extension for what is commonly referred to as 901 Cherry Base 2, but the two properties have an address now, and it is 1400 and 1450 Bay Hill Drive. And with that, I will turn it over to Pamela Wu and Kelly Biggs. In addition, you have myself, the city attorney, the public works director, and a number of other people within the community and economic development department that have worked on this and that are here to answer any questions that you may have. Pamela?
Thank you, Javon. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Pamela Wu. I'm the acting director for the Community and Economic Development Department. I have the pleasure to present the item before you tonight. Next slide, please. With me today is myself, the team that's been working on this item, city attorney, the outside attorney, Edward Schaefer, who's representing the city in this matter, and also Kelly Biggs, contract senior planner. With that, I'll turn the presentation to Kelly to walk you through with the remainder of the presentation. Kelly?
Good evening, everyone. The objective of tonight's meeting is to consider waiving the first reading and introducing an ordinance to approve the proposed second amendment to the existing development agreement for Bay Hill 8, which as Javon mentioned, is the property at 1400 and 1450 Bay Hill Drive and 901 Cherry Avenue. Secondly, the item, the objective is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement regarding subsurface improvements in the right-of-way. I'll note that the ordinance is located on page 133 of your packet tonight, the DA amendment on page 137, and the resolution on page 229. So this is the agenda for my presentation. I'll start off with some background, move on to the second amendment to the development agreement overview, a resolution overview, summarizing the October 20th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, and then move on to tonight's actions and take any questions from council. So to start off with some project background, I'd just like to start with some very broad background on the item. The item before you tonight is an amendment to a development agreement. So broadly speaking, a development agreement is a voluntary contract between a local jurisdiction and a local property owner. It details obligations of both parties and specifies standards and conditions that will govern the development of the property. It locks in current land use regulations for a set time and can also be used to negotiate benefits for both sides. This does run with the land. And as you can see, the, the portion of land that we're talking about is located on the map in the lower right hand corner of your screen. It's behind the Bay Hill Shopping Center with 380 running to the north and 280 running to the west. The site ownership has changed over time. Before 1997, it was owned by the Gap. Then in 1997, transferred to GPS Management Services. And then in 2019 was purchased by Google. So the first development agreement for this piece of land began in 1996 when the city of San Bruno and the Gap entered into a development agreement for development of the property at 901 Cherry Avenue, which you can see marked as phase one here. And 1400 and 1450 Bay Hill Drive marked as phase two here. The original project included the office building at 901 Cherry Avenue and parking deck. Buildings located here, the parking deck is here, that were developed as the Gap corporate headquarters. The development agreement also included one additional office building and a parking garage at 1400 and 1450 Bay Hill Drive, which is the phase two site. And that's located to the west of 901 Cherry Avenue here. As you can see, the phase two site is vacant. The first amendment to the DA was undertaken in 1999. And this was to add office space to the area shown as building three here. This was originally conceived as only a parking deck. The first amendment to the DA was approved on August 9th, 1999, along with an architectural review permit, a plan development permit amendment. The amended 1999 development agreement authorizes the construction of two new office buildings instead of just the one. Building two, located here, is a 170,885 square foot, three story building. And building three, located here, is a 116,000 square foot, two story building. And there's a parking garage located partially below grade there. And that would be accessed from a new access driveway at Bay Hill Drive. This first amendment to the development agreement did not involve any extension of the term. And this development agreement currently expires on February 25th, 2021. So moving on to tonight's business, I will summarize the contents of the second amendment to the DA. So unlike the first amendment, the second amendment is not being undertaken to permit changes to the development, to the development design or the program. The primary contents of the DA amendment include the extension of the expiration date and term of the development agreement from that February 25th, 2021 date to August 31st, 2021. And while the first amendment that revised the phase two plan was approved in 1999, Google only bought the property in 2019. And they have been working steadily since then to develop phase two. Google is requesting this extension in part to delays caused by the COVID-19 pandemic in addition to other factors. The second amendment to the DA also outlines that in consideration of the expiration date extension and other items in the second amendment, Google has agreed to pay a total of $4.5 million as a public benefit payment to the city's general fund. And that would occur on or before February 26th, 2021. The city art fee program, as outlined in chapter 3.4, will apply to the project. Fees for soil nails and tiebacks will apply. The parking and lieu fee is applicable to the project as it's located in a specific plan area. And lastly, the second amendment will establish alternative vesting rights. So the rights of the DA will vest when physical site work under the mass excavation and shoring permit have commenced. And at least 30% of the total soil volume specified in that permit has been excavated. And I'll just note that typically those rights vest at vertical construction. Moving on to the environmental review that's been conducted for the proposed project. As noted in the staff report, two environmental documents have been prepared for the project. The first is the 1996 EIR, which was prepared for that original project. And then an addendum to that project, which was prepared for the revised phase two project. As I've mentioned, the plans for, that the developer intends to develop are consistent with those approved in 1999. So therefore, the project intensity and land uses have not been altered by the second amendment to the development agreement. The city council is asked to make a finding that no new significant or more severe impacts will be caused to require further environmental analysis. And that finding is included in the ordinance. Moving on to the resolution. Sorry. So this resolution is included as attachment six to the staff report. It authorizes the city manager to execute an agreement regarding subsurface improvements in the right of way. This agreement will allow some of the project's foundation system components installed for construction purposes to remain within the public right of way and public easements. These elements are required for temporary shoring of the excavated area for the building three subterranean garage. And the reason that the developer can't internally shore that area is that it would impede construction of the garage itself for you to internally shore that excavated area. It is $1,000 per soil nail or tieback in the city right of way. And that fee is imposed to compensate the city for potential costs to remove those soil nails or tiebacks. Moving on to a summary of the October 20th Planning Commission meeting. The planning commission discussed the project's environmental review, which as described earlier, does not require further analysis to the, to the project's consistency with the 1999 plans and the existence of those previous environmental documents. They discussed hall trips and traffic related to the excavation of the garage and the building foundations. And the applicant would be required to use city designated hall routes and also to complete pre and post surveys of roads to ensure that the roads have not been damaged due to project construction. There was public comment on the technicality of the subject matter, as well as making housing a priority in San Bruno. The planning commission did adopt a resolution recommending city council approval. So this slide presents tonight's action. I'm available to answer any questions that you have, along with our city attorney and outside counsel. And the applicant is also in attendance. Moving on to the next steps. A second reading and adoption of the ordinance will occur at a subsequent city council meeting. And the ordinance will go into effect 30 days after the second reading. All right.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, this is a public hearing. So I'd like to do is first go ahead and see if there's any members of the public that did want to speak on this item. If you do, if you could raise your virtual hand. And City Clerk will call you in. I do see that we have someone.
Yes, Malcolm Robinson, just one moment.
Thank you.
Hi Malcolm, whenever you're ready.
Okay, a couple of years ago at August Night Out, I was talking to Councilwoman O'Connor. And there was conversation about getting Google and Walmart and YouTube and all these guys with big deep pockets to help fund a new library in San Bruno. I know we're, earlier we were talking about the beautiful rec center, pool and community hall being created. And one of the competing projects was a library. And the discussion turned to, well, maybe we could get these deep pockets to help us build a world-class, you know, modern library. Is there any discussion of that? Where did those discussions go? And I'd like an answer for this one, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Malcolm, for your comments. Is there anybody else from the public at this time?
I'm seeing no other hands raised.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Therefore, if I do close the public hearing by action of council, public will not be permitted to comment again. Seeing no additional hands, can I have action from council, please?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Five oh voice vote. Turning it back to the council, there was one comment that was raised. Is there anybody on staff that wants to discuss that or bring that up? And then I want to see if the applicant had anything that they wanted to also add after, in general. City Manager?
Sure. Mayor, members of the council, the question from the member of the public referenced a community meeting or vision meeting that I believe occurred over two and a half years ago at the, I believe was actually at the recreation center. And I believe that those were the visiting sessions around when the city was due to receive approximately $50,000, $50 million from the San Bruno Community Foundation. And there were lots of discussions on should that money be used for a library or a new aquatic and recreation center? For various reasons, there was robust community engagement. The decision was to use those funds for a new aquatic and recreation center. If my memory is correct and reading the notes, there were also conversations at that time about asking large entities in the community to help with that budget and to help fund the effort either for a library or for a new aquatic and recreation center. As the city council knows, the city council adopted development impact fees. Within development impact fees, there are categories for community facilities. The library and the recreation, our recreation facilities are within those development impact fees. In addition, as a part of the Bay Hill specific plan and as a part of the action that is before you tonight, there are community benefits. And so those community benefits dollars, and there is $4.5 million worth of community benefits in the DA extension that is before you tonight, can be applied toward a large community facility. And that decision will be up to the city council at a subsequent date. And so I do believe that those broad conversations have played out in reality. And tonight's action is a manifestation of that in the $4.5 million of community benefits that's in the action tonight. In addition, council will remember that in July of this year, there was a study session with regard to the Bay Hill specific plan and direction to include a formulated community benefit model for commercial properties. That is $35 per square foot. Several million dollars of community benefits that will come to this community once that plan is approved and then development happens over the next five, 10, 15 years.
Hey, thank you. And then also, we do have our community/business partners that are also on the line. And I wanted to see if they wanted an opportunity to speak on the project at all. Because if not, then I will move it back to council for questions and discussion. Seeing none at this time, we'll go ahead and bring it to council for discussion. Seeing no virtual hands from city council. Or physical hands. Councilmember Medina, then councilmember Mason.
Great, Mayor Medina, Mayor Medina had a little trouble with that last name. Sorry about that. First of all, thank everyone for this report. I understand this has taken a lot, a lot of effort and a lot of hours. And, and here we are, looking at entering a development agreement for a new, a new big building during a pandemic. So I think this also signifies how San Bruno is a place to be, to grow. And with that said, I have a few questions. Just wanted a little more clarity on the city art fee and how that plays out for myself and the public. Also about the parking requirements. At this point, the, there are supposed to be 865 parking spaces. And how is that adjusted? And who approves that? And what fees are associated with? And a range, because I, the range of fees, I understand that as they're building and putting the drawings together, that there'll be some movement on that number. And my last question is understandably, the environmental impact for this property is not significantly changing. But my concern is the traffic that is generated from this project and how it cascades down to the rest of our community as we're going to be developing the transit corridor plan and Mills Park and the Bay Hill specific plan. So where does this additional traffic get inputted to the traffic studies that have already been completed? And I'll stop there with those three things.
Do you have further questions before we turn it over to staff or just those three?
That's the three that I have for now.
Okay. So does staff want to address some of the questions? By councilmember Medina?
Sure, Javon, broken city manager, through the mayor. Why don't we take those, beginning with the latter and then go to the former? And so the last question was around the economic, or I'm sorry, the environmental impact of traffic and how that will be incorporated into future traffic sets. And so why don't I turn it over to Pamela Wu, our acting community and economic development director, to talk about the environmental impact report that this DA in development is tearing off of first, and then talk about how future traffic analysis will incorporate the traffic that is generated by this project if the project is both approved and/or developed by the time those subsequent projects happen.
Of course, Honorable Mayor. So the project traffic analysis has been adequately reviewed in the 1999 draft EIR, the final EIR, when it was prepared and approved by council. So the staff has also reviewed a conformance review proposed by Google not too long ago. The staff determination is that the current proposal is similar and substantial in conformance with the original approval. Therefore, the traffic mitigation has been adequately addressed through a 1999 environmental document. That's kind of a short answer to a long story. I'll actually turn it over to Kelly. She has the technicality of exactly why we're not asking for any report.
Sure, so we don't ask for a new report because there's been no increase in square footage or intensity of the use. And those are the items that would require a new traffic report. In terms of your question about kind of future documentation, any general plan update would take this development into account and the current traffic conditions to analyze existing conditions. And then, and then that would be added to whatever future plans that you have. And we are under VMT now, so that's. And we are under V M T now, so that's not entirely under C Q A, but you are still allowed to do it to determine general plan consistency.
And I do want to add that additional traffic that will be analyzed through the Bay Hill specific plan will be mitigating, mitigated through that new E I R.
Right. I just was making sure that, and I totally understand how there is no additional environmental review needed. I just wanted to, to hear when this additional traffic from this project, where, where does that get added to these future traffic studies and mitigation of the Bay Hill specific plan? You answered my question, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we had the two other items, which was in regards to the parking and the art.
Sure. Why don't I start with that one? But I may toss that to staff as well. So I think it's important for the community as a reminder that in twenty nineteen, the city council directed staff to look at our parking requirements and amend the city's parking ordinances. That work was done and actually just before COVID nineteen and the shelter in place, your very last regular meeting where you were meeting in person, I think that was the last meeting in February, is when the second reading of those new parking standards took place. What it provided was a in lieu fee program for various areas in the city. In particular, for this development, there is a parking in lieu fee of sixty thousand dollars per space and developments can use up to thirty percent of their, of the developments' parking for the in lieu fee program. The ordinance provides for the approval body to be the community and economic development director or the approval body for the entitlement of the project or permit. The D A that is before you clarifies that any in lieu request will have, that the approval will be the community and economic development director. With regard to your question of exactly how many spaces the applicant will propose, staff does not know the answer to that at this time, but they are allowed to fee out for the full amount under the city's ordinance that was passed in February of this year, which is thirty percent of the parking spaces. Now, there will be a technical review of that and it's not a, as we talked about when that ordinance was passed, it is not a fait accompli. It is, it is a discretionary decision that, that may or may not be granted if requested. Staff, is there anything additional that you want to chime in that I may have left off?
I think that's all right. I think just the intent from the, the plans, the preliminary plans that we've reviewed, all parking spaces are being provided on site. I think the intent in including that is to provide flexibility for a minor amount of spaces in case there's some loss during development of construction documents.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? So up to two hundred and sixty parking spaces could be paid through the parking lieu fee. And, and I understand that they will be working on, on the plans and, and there is no set number currently at this time, but it, but it's anticipated that the majority of the parking will, will, will be provided? Is that accurate?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Two not and a yes. And then finally, from the councilmember, the art.
So the question was an explanation of how the city art fee program will work. So why don't I interpret that a little broadly and we'll talk about it. So there is a requirement to pay the city art fee. What the city's ordinance allows is the ability for the fee to be paid into the city art fund. And then there's a process outlined in the municipal code if there's to be onsite city, city art provided onsite. And so the D A clarifies that the developer at their, at their, will, will follow our ordinance, municipal code three point four zero, point zero seven zero, and comply with that ordinance, either paying the R F P or providing it onsite. If the art, if the public art is provided onsite, there is a process where that onsite art is first reviewed by the public art commission. It then goes to the planning commission for approval and then can also be called up by any member of the city council to be reviewed by the city council. So the city council is in effect the ultimate decider of any onsite art request by virtue of the ability to call up a decision of the public art commission or the planning commission if the developer decides to provide onsite art.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilmember.
Okay. So basically, the, the owner decides, hey, we want to go ahead and provide some of that art onsite. So they propose it, it goes to the culture and arts commission? And then it rolls, then it rolls through? So there is a public process and, and, and at, at any time during that process, the council could step in and say, hey, we, we want to hear this. Is that correct?
Yes, although not at any time, but upon the decision of the public committee or the planning commission.
Got it. It just would be interesting that, I'll just say it, that up, up in that area, or even better yet, San Bruno needs art throughout our city that's readily accessible to the public. And I, I hope that it winds up being out, out within the public, not more so in a, a business park. It's, it's kind of set away up, up where that location is, but I look forward to, to hearing what's going to happen with this. But thank you. Those are, you've answered my questions.
Councilmember Mason?
Hi, thank you. So just adding, I think, the questions that councilmember Medina just posed, my question is really, I understand the process as far as the three point four oh, point oh seven oh, once an item is kind of ready, I guess, to be brought before the approval process. But the current code essentially says that the D A is one of the, one of the ways that you can meet your requirement under code section three point four oh, point oh four oh. And so when I'm looking at the D A, it says here that when ordinarily due under city procedures, developer may propose to receive credit for art provided within the property, which city in its discretion may approve pursuant to the procedures and criteria described in code chapter three point four oh. So essentially by approving the D A, we're allowing the developer to get credit upon the city's discretion. So I'm just wondering if that's something we can take, take out at this point? Because it seems like the only way that it's allowed is by our approval tonight pursuant to councilmember Medina's comment. We don't have a lot of art in San Bruno. It would be really great to see a contribution made to the city art fund and go from there.
City manager?
Sure. Councilmember Mason, I'm going to turn this over to the city attorney because our reading of the code and the D A is slightly different from the understanding that you articulated. So I'll, I'll toss it to city attorney Mark Zacharano.
Okay, thank you.
City attorney, please.
Sure. So section three point four zero does have a section in it that at least implies that there might be art on private property as opposed to in, in public spaces. And so that's in point oh seven oh, C one, where it says that the development project is subject to planning commission review and approval and includes onsite placement of artwork. So I guess our interpretation, my interpretation of code is that it's certainly not prohibited by the code. And it's, it's sort of explicitly mentioned that there might be a project that contemplates the placement of artwork on, on private property. So it's not the development agreement that is providing that option really to, to the, to the developer. We think the developer could propose it anyway. And just like in the D A, it would be subject to the requirements of the code. So it goes to culture and arts commission and then it would go to the planning commission, could be called up by the city council. So that is the public process that's both in the code and is currently existing in the development agreement.
Okay. And if I may, I'm looking at three point four oh, point oh five oh, where it says in the absence of a development agreement or other similar agreement providing for public art or an art fund fee, the program allocation shall be as follows. And then it lets you know how much needs to be allocated to the fund. So in the absence of the D A, then there would be a contribution. So I'm seeing it as this is the opportunity right now to identify really the city's preference as far as whether we want, we would like to see a contribution or in financially or just as art versus the even possibility of proposing to receive credit for art provided within the property.
City attorney?
So the only comment I would offer about that, there's certainly a policy decision for the city council to be made, but I think section oh five zero, which is entitled program allocation, really doesn't refer to what kind of art or where the art is or whether art is provided or an in lieu fee is provided. What it refers to is that if, if there isn't a fee that's provided, it's, here's how it's allocated. So I guess I don't see that as necessarily changing the ability of, of a developer in the absence of a development agreement to propose onsite placement of, of art on private property, because that's covered in section point oh seven oh. So I don't think those two sections really are talking about the same thing.
Okay, yeah.
Certainly a council decision as to how they want to, how they want to treat this.
Yeah. And I think that's what I'm really trying to get at is that this is a, that this is a council decision. And my preference would be that they are be, that there not be a credit receipt for art provided on the property. I think that obviously we need a majority of the council to make that decision, but I do think that we are in need of art here in San Bruno. Anytime, if you just Google San Bruno art, there's very little to look for or look at. And that would be one thing I'd like to request. And then my second question is in regards to the parking. I do recall the February meeting that city manager Brogan referred to and regarding the parking. And this, this was my concern then as well, is the idea of paying the in lieu fees for less parking. And so I understand that the discretion does belong to the city administration, but my question specific to that is if we're talking about a huge loss from eight hundred and sixty-five units, and we can define huge however you'd like, but will the city council be advised? Will there be some kind of an informational session? Will there be an item on the agenda? And I, and I would imagine that now would be the time to request that because based on my read, it's not required. It's a, it's a discretion, it's at the discretion of the, I believe it's economic development director.
City attorney, do you have any comment?
Mr. Mayor? Sure. Let me take that. So I think at the heart of councilmember Mason's statement is whether the discretion is placed with professional staff or the city council. And at the end of the day, that's a policy decision of the city council. What I would say is that our ordinances articulate that. And the place to change that would be into changing ordinance, because when we have development, developers look at our policies and our resolutions and our ordinances that have been adopted through public process. And we typically do not want to change those for a specific development. What we want to do is to change it in our code and say how it will work overall for everyone. In addition, I think the difference between having a decision of the council or having a decision that is provided to your professional staff, staff is actually pretty stark and you can't muddle them by saying it's a staff decision, but before staffs make, makes a decision, we're, we want to have a study session so the council can apply. It's sort of either one or the other. And that's a policy decision of the city council. But if a decision is charged with the professional staff, be it the director, the city manager, or any, or any other staff member, there's not a process to go to council to check in on that potential decision. There, because then it's essentially a council decision. And so if you want to make that policy decision, I would say make that policy decision. And back to the first comment is those policy decisions are best made when you adopt your codes and ordinances, not when individual projects come before you.
So based on the, on the D A, it's on section five, it does, I mean, and this is in the February report too, but the community and economic development director has the authority and discretion under the code to approve the reduction, the number of parking spaces onsite. So I'm not disagreeing with the, what you just said. And city attorney and I spoke before this meeting. I just want to make sure this conversation is public for purposes of obviously the D A. But I think really what I'm asking is this is not your, when we, when this came to the council, there were different variations of it. There was parking requirements that we wanted waived for small mom and pop businesses. There were a number of benefits to the community that came with, with this policy change. And one of the concerns was that parking nowadays costs over sixty thousand dollars per space, right? Depending on, on where you're building it. And so if you pay out the in lieu fee and it's in some, someday the city needs parking, we're going to have to pay that out of, out of our fund in some way. And so if there's going to be a reduction, that's going to be great. It's not really so much of a request to approve it that I'm requesting. It's more of a, hey, here, we're getting a request to reduce eight hundred and sixty-five spaces by thirty percent, which would be quite substantial. And I want to be clear, that is not being requested at this time, but that the city council be informed that that request is being made.
Okay. And then I see Mr. Schaefer also has been patient, but I, I saw your, your hand go up. Do you want to find on something here, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that that section is in the development agreement amendment regarding the parking fee, I'm sorry, regarding the art fee to make sure the city got that fee. It was part of the negotiation of this document where the property owner had beliefs that they were exempt from some city fees because of the older development agreement being in effect. And we negotiated to make sure that they acknowledged that they would be obligated to pay the art fee. How it's treated later on, we left to the city's procedure, whether it would be paid in full or be, would be partly offset by art that was located on the property.
Thank you for some of that information.
Thank you.
Anything else, councilmember Mason, at this time?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think as far as the art fee, if we can go back to attorney Schaefer, is there a way, attorney Schaefer, that we can make sure that that come back to the council? If there's a proposal to receive credit for art provided within the, within the property? I know attorney DeFrono has said that it's a policy decision that the council can make.
Right. Well, as, as, as the city attorney said, the, the city code describes how it goes to the art and culture commission and they make, they make decisions. It may go to the planning commission if there's an underlying discretionary approval tied to it. And the city council has the authority to call it up for review and approval. So I mean, that's what the city code says. Development agreement simply says the code. The Development Agreement simply says the code will be implemented in that regard. It doesn't delegate to the director or anyone else.
Okay. Okay, as far as the city art, that answers my questions. And then for the parking, I would like to go back to whether the City Council would be informed of a request for a parking reduction. Understanding that that is not currently part of the, the policy, but concerned that there will be a request that will impact communities surrounding the development.
Sure. So absolutely. Staff totally understands that this is a very significant development, and the council would like to be informed of a request. And so we would certainly, of course, inform you. I want to clarify a point that was made earlier, though. The preliminary plans that have been submitted does not show a request for a parking reduction. In fact, it shows that they're meeting the parking reductions. I'm sorry, they're meeting the parking requirements. The conversations that staff have had with the owner of the project have been about minor reductions to those parking requirements once the final plans are submitted. And so there have currently been no discussions at all about anywhere close to the maximum that's allowed in the code, which is 30% of the required parking spaces. But I should also be clear that what the DA and the code says is that the Community and Economic, that that, that the power to approve any INLO fees is vested with the Community and Economic Development Director. Upon council's approval, while we will inform if there's ever a request and approval, what will be controlling is the DA that council approves. And so it will only be informational. If council would like to retain that control, then you would essentially be vesting that responsibility to the City Council, and that's a different process.
Right.
But what I hear is a request to be informed of it, and the answer to that is out of the court.
Understood, thank you.
Any other questions from colleagues? Or?
Who's here?
Oh, I was thinking, is Marty waving? Vice Mayor Salazar.
Good night to everybody.
Thank you. Yeah, I had, I had questions around the parking waiver as well, but I think it was, it was pretty well answered. And I actually, I was, I was wondering if there had been a request from the owners in terms of reducing the parking. It sounds like that's not the case, so we're just truing up with some of the other agreements that are on, on record. So being that this original agreement goes back 25 years, it's, it's great that we were able to salvage as much of it as we have, with only a few minor things, and still managed to get quite a bit of community benefit out of it. So I think that speaks volumes to our staff and the collaboration we have with, with the owners. So, you know, good job all the way around on that. You know, I, I did have some concerns around the, you know, the EIR being as old as it is and, you know, just basically rolling it forward. It sounds like everything's being addressed. I did have a question if the, the current EIR that's being done for the larger Bay Hill project, I, I'm pretty sure it overlaps this area, and I'm wondering if there's any changes that will come out of when that process is finalized and if will, will it have any effects that will, or will it affect this project in any way if we uncover other things based on that EIR, EIR which is already in process?
I can answer that. Studa Mayor. The current EIR that's been prepared for the specific plan has already taken this into consideration. So there will be no further complication based on what your action tonight.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay. Yeah, other than that, I don't have any other real questions about what's being proposed. Well, actually, no, I take that back. I did have some questions around the, the request for the, what do they call, the nails that are being used for the retaining of the soil. And there wasn't really a lot of detail in the packet in terms of where those retaining walls are relative to the buildings and where they are relative to our easement and what is in the easement area. And so I was just wondering if you could get some detail around what, what's being impacted.
Sure, I can try to answer that, if that's okay. So first off, the shoring plans are still under review from this, by the city, so it's not final. Basically, it's the outline of Building 3, kind of that building footprint, is, is where the soil nails will project. The easements are also being revised currently. But what you're, the, the nails that we're looking at are the ones that will project into, and I can bring up my presentation again if that would help. One moment. I think I have a good slide here to show. All right, let me make this larger. So the edges of this building, basically, when, this is going to be a planner's explanation of engineering, which may really shock Jimmy Tan listening, they're going to excavate a fairly large hole around this building footprint to accommodate the underground garage. And then in order to keep the sides of that hole up, they'll put piles into the ground, and then soil nails will project this way. And this is the part of the city right-of-way that we're talking about.
Okay. And, and there is a water line that goes along that, that edge there on the right of that building. Is that correct?
I would have to look back at the utility plans, but I know that Public Works is closely reviewing this.
Yes, there, there is a water line as well as a storm drain line and sewer line within the area.
Okay. All right. And so my, my concern there is that it, it, it sounds like we're basically buying off on responsibility for those. And if sometime in the future, we have to replace that infrastructure and remove those nails or interfere with those nails, do then we assume liability for any structural integrity for that, that construction that was done there? And that's, that's really the concern, is that if, you know, by, you know, accepting the, the payment for these nails now, do we then incur future liability for any changes that might be made for our infrastructure in that area?
Jimmy, I'm not sure if, if you can answer that better than I can. But my understanding of the soil nail agreement is that basically there's an area in between the depth of the utilities and the surface that there will be soil nails placed into, and they will be left there with no reason to remove them. And then the cost of the $1,000 per soil nail is to allow the city to have the funds to remove those soil nails so that they could modify or conduct maintenance on any infrastructure.
That's correct. And, and, and then if the, I think Councilmember Salazar, you're doing your question in regards to the, any future concerns with removing the soil nails to future, I guess, impacts to the, the walls is what I'm hearing. There wouldn't, it wouldn't be any impacts, you know, these soil nails, once the wall construct, wall for the garage is constructed, the soil nails are, I would say, not tensioned or anymore. So it's, so those contractors who are working within the area can remove the soil nails without any issues.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. I, I think that covers it then. And then lastly, just one, one sort of suggestion. So this packet was a pretty large packet, 230-something pages. And I noticed that there was a large section in here that was, it was repeated. And it was, I think, something like 80 pages that appeared in there twice. And I don't know if that was intentional or not. I know sometimes, you know, packets are brought in, in their entirety, and then pasted in the middle of other documents, and it tends to make them very big. And, you know, sometimes we're reading through these, and things start seeming really repetitive, and it turns out that we're reading the same report twice. And I was just going to make a recommendation that perhaps in future packets, rather than embed all of these sort of support documents, that we merely provide links or a reference to these other documents and make those other documents available as standalone documents. I think it would serve two purposes. One, it would reduce the size of each individual package, so then they're easier for us to download and consume, they're easier for the public to download and consume. And it also puts these other documents out in a format where they're readily available should we need to reference them for something other than what's being discussed currently or just for historical reasons that we need to go back and access those. So just a request on how we might streamline this, this process.
Casey, no other hands up. Some of the questions that I had had been answered, i.e., for example, the EIR, I think that has now been addressed. The, the liability aspect was also a question of mine, but I think Vice Mayor went into even more detail than, than I had thought. So I think, I appreciate the staff's response. So what I'm understanding though, too, is, you know, we have current process and an ordinance in place and on, on what's established, and that's what's before us tonight is the DA and the resolution. So, you know, again, what, what a concern is, is that we're changing. And the art element of it, it goes before Culture and Arts Commission, which is appointed by council. It goes before the Planning Commission. Then it can also come up before the City Council. So I think there's quite a few avenues in which it goes through to have that discussed about the art and where it's placed and what's accepted. And, and I think the city manager already said, we wanted a notification as far as the parking element, which is not as, it's not on the table at this point, then, then therefore that, that will be done. So is there any, without anything else, there is action on the item, there is a first reading. So is there any action on the waiving of the first reading?
I move we waive the first reading.
Is there a second? A second by Councilmember Medina to waive the first reading. And City Clerk, because I just want to make sure that each one of these is recorded, can you please take role on this?
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Mason.
Hi.
Councilmember Medina.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Hi.
Mayor Medina.
Hi. Second, thank you very much. The second item action is a introduction of the DA for the ordinance. Is there any action by council on that?
I move we approve the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Mason.
Hi.
Councilmember Medina.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Salazar. Vice Mayor Salazar.
Hi. Hi.
And Mayor Medina.
Hi. Final action is to adopt the, the resolution on this item. Is there any action from council?
Motion to approve.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Councilmember Medina. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Mason.
Hi.
Councilmember Medina.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Hi.
And Mayor Medina.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you again. Thank you to staff and thank you to the business partners and to all, all the work that's been done is, was articulated before and what was, is before this evening, and appreciate everybody's efforts and work. With that, we'll move on to Conductive Business, Item 7.
Item 7A, Adopt a Resolution Supporting the Huntington Bike Way and Pedestrian Safety Project and Submitting an Application to the Samatyo County Transportation Authority for Pedestrian and Bicycle Program Funding.
And this is going to go over to Director Tan, but I, I just, to have it acknowledged, I serve on the Samatyo County Transportation Authority as the vice chair. And we did review this at Thursday's meeting for the recommendations submitted by the committee. And this item will be coming back in December to the Transportation Authority for this and, and other projects within, within the county. I've checked with legal counsel at the Transit District, in addition to the legal counsel, to our city attorney, and I am not in conflict to vote on this here, as well as at the Transportation Authority next month. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Director Tan.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Jimmy Tan, Public Works Director. Have a brief presentation on this item tonight. The objective is to adopt resolutions supporting the Huntington Bike Way and Pedestrian Safety Project and submitting an application to the Samatyo County Transportation Authority for Pedestrian and Bicycle Program Funding. The agenda for tonight's presentation is as follows. I'll provide a brief background on the project, discuss the conceptual project that was proposed in the walk-in bike plan, share information on the proposed revised project, give an overview of the stratus of various grant applications which we received or applied for, and share the next steps. As for the background, you know, the city's general plan transit corridor plan and walk-in bike plan contains policies or programs and projects that aims at improving the, and developing new and existing pedestrian and bicycle networks. And the overall goal of these plans is to establish bicycle, bicycling and walking as a sustainable means for transportation to reduce congestion and vehicle emissions. The walk-in bike plan was adopted on July 26, 2016, and includes various pedestrian and bicycle improvement projects. One of the plan's goal is to better connect the BART and Caltrain stations to destinations like downtown, Bay Hill Shopping Centers and Office Park, and the shops at Tampran. Therefore, the northern stretch of Huntington Avenue is one of the city's most important connectors for pedestrian and cyclists. One of the conceptual projects recommended in the walk-in bike plan is to establish bicycle lanes along Huntington Avenue from Centennial Way to downtown. This slide shows a proposed conceptual project in the walk-in bike plan. This concept involves converting the outside northbound lanes, you know, the easternmost lane into a two-way bicycle lane, and using a physical buffer such as a concrete median as you see on the upper white, right picture, to separate the bicycle lane from the remaining traffic lane. The concept also proposes the sidewalk on the bicycle lane side of the, the street to be enhanced. So before implementing this project, the plan indicated that the city should conduct this, you know, a traffic study to determine traffic impacts resulting from the removal of the, the travel lanes. Since the traffic congestion may be, may become an issue if one travel lane is removed, staff evaluated whether keeping the travel lanes would be a feasible option. The proposed revised project keeps both travel lanes by reducing the lane widths to 10 to 11 feet in certain areas, and also includes a two-way bicycle cycle track, which is five feet in each direction on the northbound direction of Huntington Avenue. Sheros, which are pavement markings that look similar to the, you know, the bottom right picture that you see there, will be installed along the rightmost southbound lane along with signage. The sheros allows drivers and bicyclists, you know, to be aware of that both vehicles and bicyclists are to share the road. Separate walking path adjacent to the cycle track will also be constructed, and lots of installation of pedestrian scale lighting and landscape to enhance the biking and walking experience. So this proposed project is estimated to be approximately $6.8 million. So since it involves more reconstruction than the one proposed in the walk-in bike plan. So I'd like to share some of the design documents prepared by city staff of the proposed revised project. I understand maybe really hard to see on these slides here, but just wanted to show you the extent of the work scope that's required for this estimated $6.8 million project cost. So this slide shows the area of Huntington Avenue, as it curves from Sneeze Lane towards Huntington Avenue. The Centennial Trail is highlighted in yellow. The Centennial Trail is highlighted in yellow, as you can see there, and then bike route located within the northern direction of Huntington Avenue in this area here. And then the sheros are located in the southern direction here along Huntington Avenue. And then the new concrete sidewalks are being proposed adjacent to the bicycle lanes. And then existing proposed roadway cross-sections are shown here on the drawings. As you can see, you know, with the new proposed sections, there will be a need for a retaining wall of about one to four feet high to construct the new bicycle lanes here. So here's the, the plan areas are showing area near Bay Shore Circle, new sidewalk again that are being proposed along the entire stretch. There's connection of sidewalks that are being proposed to connect the Bay Shore Circle there, and a retaining wall is also required at this segment. Again, another section that shows near Scott Street along, you know, sidewalks, new bicycle trails, and then again, retaining wall and with sheros all along there as well. This slide shows, you know, the entrance, you know, near Tampran. There wouldn't be a need for retaining wall because the Huntington Avenue East is a little bit further away, and there's just landscape in the area here in this area, so there isn't a need for retaining wall. But there will be need for relocating some of the existing storm drain in this area, and then the median work will be required further down during the northern part of this section here. So here's the slide shows that shows the Herman Street. So we're kind of, we're considering Herman Street as a cutoff between Phase One and Phase Two. Phase Two would be from Herman Street all the way to Centennial Trail, and Phase One would be Herman Street all the way to San Bruno Avenue. You know, curb ramps needs to be installed here to meet ADA requirements and new sidewalk. You know, there's SFP easements for SOPUC right-of-way that needs to be resolved in this area as well. A new medium curbs would need to be redone because we're trying to keep two lanes here at this area. So curbs, medium, mediums would need to be reconstructed along Herman and south direction towards San Bruno Avenue. Here's another section, you know, near Huntington, along Huntington Avenue near Euclid. Here, Euclid actually has a turning lane from Huntington Avenue. You know, with the need for two lanes along Huntington Avenue, that turning lane will be removed, a new medium will be reconstructed or being proposed to be reconstructed in this area, get new sidewalks, and then bicycle lanes there. And this is, you know, the intersection at San Bruno Avenue and Huntington near the Caltrain Station there. Again, new curb ramps, there's a single lane here from, you know, San Bruno Avenue heading north direction in order to include two bicycle lanes along, adjacent to that, and then it will transition to two lanes along Huntington as you get, as, you know, the bicycle lane kind of veers off closer to the sidewalk. So in regards to the grant applications, you know, the city is always looking for funding opportunities, right? In 2017, staff applied for the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, MTC, the One Bay Area Grant Two Program, and we received a grant in an amount of $914,000. And there is a local match required in an amount of $285,000 for that grant. And recently, staff submitted the grant application to the San Mateo County Transportation Authority, Pedestrian and Bicycle Program, and staff requested $2 million in grant funding, which is the maximum award amount. And currently, we were guaranteed to receive $1.4 million, and the $2 million will be granted if the city is able to secure all the funding to complete the project. So it's September, also in September 2020, staff applied for an active transportation program grant, which is a cycle five grant, to request funding towards the full scope of the entire project, and the requested amount was $6.7 million. And staff is, you know, it's currently unknown whether we will receive that grant, and we anticipate to hear back sometime in March of 2021. As for the fiscal impact and alternative, there's really no fiscal impact with adopting this resolution tonight, and then no appropriations are being requested. The resolution does state that the city, you know, will be committed or to be committed to the project cost difference, which is about $4.7 million, which is a requirement from the TA, but it's contingent on the city's receiving additional grant funding for the entire project. Now, if the city is unable to secure this funding, the city will receive $1.4 million, which is adequate to perform the work from Herman Street to San Bruno Avenue, which is, you know, the Phase One that I mentioned earlier. For the alternative, the council can choose not to adopt the resolution and withdraw the application for the grant of funding. As for the next steps, you know, the city will be completing a traffic study. The agreement has been sent out to the traffic consultant for signatures, and the study is anticipated to be completed in February. The traffic study will be evaluating traffic operations impacts, you know, in 2025 and 2040 with scenarios that includes one lane, you know, being removed and lanes not being removed. We also need to resolve easement issues with BART and SOPUC. The easement and right-of-way issues near BART Station still needs to be transferred to the city, and staff has met with BART representatives in the field to discuss those easements, and BART is currently preparing a tentative map for city's review. There's also SOPUC easement issues that needs to be resolved from Herman Street towards San Bruno Avenue, and staff has a conference call scheduled with SOPUC this Friday to discuss the easement transfer issues. And lastly, staff will be looking for any other additional grant opportunities to fund this project. We don't get the ATP grant. So this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you. My hesitation is, they're at Euclid, and so currently, we're proposing to remove that turn lane, and also was my understanding from the TSPC that there was supposed to be a crosswalk there. I could be wrong, but I thought it was approved from the TSPC, so to allow the residents to get across the street to go to the other side, but I'm kind of concerned about that, but I guess that will be addressed in the traffic study, correct?
Yes, correct. And then we will also, you know, these are preliminary plans, so we have, we would have to, you know, go back and revisit, you know, what was indicated in the traffic TSBC documents. And I know there, it will be a concern regarding the removal of the, you know, the left turn pocket lanes, and that's something that we would have to evaluate as well, you know, through the design process.
It seemed like you would likely have to put a signal there, because a lot of people use Euclid as a cut-through. But okay, we'll deal with that in the traffic study. So if you can go back to where the funding remains of, on that screenshot, is it $4.7 million that we would be short if we got the full $2 million?
That's correct. So the TA is, you know, looking at the overall entire project of $6.8 million. So if they give us, you know, $2 million of the grant funding, they would like the city to be, you know, committed to the remaining balance, you know, the difference in the balance, right? And so that's something that the city is looking, you know, towards to try and get from hoping maybe the ATP grant that will allow us to give us the full, you know, $6.8 million, and then we'll probably have more money than what we need to build this entire, you know, the project. If we don't get the ATP grant, sometimes we probably know by maybe March of next year, and we'll possibly just get the $1.4 million from the county and just do the Phase One first.
Okay.
And then whenever there's additional grant opportunities that are available in the future, we'll apply for that to complete the Phase Two from Herman Street to Centennial Trail.
Got it. All right, that's great. So the Bay Shore Circle, that kind of stretch of dead property, I guess, is that part of the resolving the BART and right-of-way issues? Is what's going on there?
Yeah, that is not part of the, you know, the right-of-way issues that we're resolving, because the right-of-way issue that we're solving was when, during the time when BART was constructed. Some of those easements were never transferred to the city, so that Bay Shore Circle sliver, you know, there, that's not included as part of that.
Okay, and I thought, if I recall, that part of the Scott Street grade separation, there was some, just during one of the meetings or so, of trying to come up with an alternative way for the residents to exit out onto Huntington. I recall there was a preliminary discussion, and if we were gonna move forward with this grant or with this project, it, those conflict, that there's no, there's no inclusion of that alternate access point. So just wanted to just bring that up, that that will constrict us from proceeding with that, I guess, allowance of additional accessway for the public if this happens.
Yeah, correct. And then one of the renderings showed that the, you know, the use of the crossing, you know, from one side to the other along Bay Shore Circle. But I think right now, you know, that whole sliver is owned by BART. The last, you know, we had discussions about Bay Shore Circle a long time ago, I think years, maybe three or four years ago with BART. There are some environmental concerns regarding, you know, that location, and there are also, you know, well, there could be potential cost issues that, you know, that the city may have to incur, right, to even, even to even mitigate some of those environmental issues, you know, within that area. You know, we did meet with BART representatives at one time, and they were considering maybe selling the property to the city, but I don't think we wanted, we, you know, moved forward with pursuing that alternative at that moment, and we somewhat, you know, didn't pursue additional communication, you know, for that at all. I know there was some interest of maybe converting that area to some sort of park, you know, neighborhood park as well at one time along Bay Shore Circle. So, you know, if there's an interest, you know, since, if there's a future interest, you know, the city can continue discussions with the BART representatives, you know, for that area and determine whether, you know, they will, you know, give us.
I recall, I recall hearing about that a little bit, and that they were gonna do a preliminary Phase One assessment of that area to see what type of contamination was there, but I don't want to get too far into the weeds. We're gonna stay on this, but that would, it would seem that would be contingent on us getting this additional grant funding. So you've answered my questions, and I think you guys did a great job of locating the money to get us to Phase One. So I will be in support of this, so thank you for your answers.
Thank you. All right, so no other hands up from colleagues, and we're going to go to, we have a, oh, I'm gonna come right back to you, Mr. Sal, let's go to Vice Mayor Salazar, then I'm gonna go to the member of the public.
Okay, thank you. Mine is quick. So as part of the project that's being proposed for the area immediately adjacent to that entrance to Centennial Plaza and the proposed reconfiguration of Sneeve Avenue, or Sneeve Lane in that area, would that reconfiguration affect this project? And could that reconfiguration and that request to open up that throughput there provide some additional funding as part of that development and of the agreement? Could we request that funding be made available for the remainder of this project? Or is the timing not gonna line up for us?
Yeah, you know, there is a development in South City, right, that is being proposed to, you know, to make some modifications to that intersection there, to open it up, to connect South City and San Bruno there at that little corner of Sneeve Lane and Huntington. You know, we haven't discussed any, you know, costs or any information with the developer at this moment. I think that's something that the city can, you know, can discuss. I think right now, they're looking into doing a traffic study, and we haven't gotten any information from the developer for that, you know, improvements here and for the proposed improvements at the intersections. So currently, right now, we haven't really discussed any cost benefits to the city.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Mason, you waved your hand, and then we're gonna go to the member of the public.
Thank you. I actually just wanted to comment, I just wanted to thank you, Jimmy, for actually getting this together and for submitting the application. One of the items that we talked about in the strategic planning was ways to get projects done and generate revenue. So I really appreciate you taking the time to get this together. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam City Clerk, if you can bring in Mr. Robinson, please.
I thought of a couple jokes to bring to you at this time, but I'll do them at another time when we're in person. I want to applaud the council and the city staff on this project. I always thought this project was gonna go all the way to Lamita School down San Antonio Avenue as well, take traffic, bicycle traffic off El Camino. I was happy at last night's meeting of the revision of the county bicycle pedestrian plan to see several members of the city council and staff at that meeting. I applaud your efforts in this, what's to me a very important effort, improving the ability of people to walk and bicycle around San Bruno. It's a car-centric city. I would ask that you please consider also an east-west route across the town while we have an opportunity to get some funding for that from different sources. It would connect well with the San Mateo County Plan as well as for people working in the Bay Hill area to get down to BART, for example, to cross the town, and allow people like myself who live up in the hills, safer access to the downhill part of San Bruno. And last, at the September CCG BPAC that I'm a member of, we had a presentation by the Quick Builds Projects Company. They've done about 24 miles of projects in Santa Clara County, and the idea is that you can improve safety of bicycling and pedestrians at a lower cost using different techniques and less permanent infrastructure changes, like changing sewer lines and curbs and things like that, that this project entails. This is a lot of money for a couple blocks we're talking about here. Can't imagine what it would cost to, at this rate, to really have widespread improvement of bicycling and pedestrian safety in San Bruno. But in any case, I applaud your efforts on this behalf and, you know, making it safer for us to get around town in modes of transportation other than cars. And please consider micro mobility as you build these plans up. People are using e-bikes now and scooters and things, so they're going a little higher rate of speed. So please consider those modes of transport as you do your planning. And with that, I thank you and bid you adieu.
Thank you, Mark, for your comments. Okay, not seeing any more hands up from the public or from council. I just, I just wanted to say, you know, the decision will be made next month by the Transportation Authority, but I do want to thank Jimmy, because you've been here, is this didn't just start now. This started back in 2017, when you first started to acquire and get grants. And let me tell you, by looking at the report for last Thursday, there are other grants that were applied for that were not successful because of the criteria mechanisms, and there's others from other cities. The resolution, folks, is essential, or the grant application is not valid. And that is a mechanism that is used so that the community is aware as well. Also, what has helped is Measure W funds. So that is something the voters approve, which now the county is seeing that extra monies and dollars are able to go toward grade steps or toward bike and ped that it hasn't had before to just measure A. So that's been something that's been helpful, but I did want to thank you, Jimmy, because obviously you've been working on this and looking for opportunities, and so that's appreciated. And I'd like to go to Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor Medina. No, I just, I think it's important to say, and I really appreciate resident, or Commissioner really, Malcolm Robinson's comments tonight on a number of different issues. So he is, he is fired up, and he is. So he is, he is fired up and he has made some really excellent points. But I think it's important to mention that I, I, I hope I speak for myself, but I think all council members, and I hope even incoming council members, will continue to focus on improvements to city in terms of bicycle, uh, pedestrian and that we have to find ways to get to the city, including the east-west. Um, and I know that that is something that YouTube is also very much part of, um, the solution as well. Um, and so that's not gonna go away. And, and, you know, sadly, when you look at these short distances is and this costs $6 million. It's important, too, that we don't cut corners because of those costs and that, you know, safety is always number one. So all those is very expensive venture and, um, it's, it's an important one and it's a great connection from the Centennial Trail to public transportation. So, um, thank you for, Jimmy, for all the work and, uh, and for all, all the work that you've done and, and not just for this, um, but, you know, grant, grant funding and requests for grants has been happening for many, many years and this is nothing new. So it's happy to see and hopefully we can be very successful. Thanks.
Okay, with that, uh, this is an action item. There is an action of needing to adopt a resolution if, if wishing to support the Huntington Bike Way and Pedestrian Safety Project.
I move we approve the resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second and Vice Mayor, Councilmember Davis, roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, Item B, please.
Item seven B, adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement with the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission for the Stormwater Pipeline Replacement Project and appropriating $450,000 from the General Fund Capital Reserve Fund.
Director Tan, I believe you're up.
I'm up again, yes. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Also have a brief presentation on this item as well. Uh, this item is regards to the storm drain pipeline replacement project in the city. The objective is to adopt the resolution authorizing city managers to execute a memorandum of agreement with San Francisco Public Utilities Commission for the Stormwater Pipeline Replacement Project on appropriating $450,000 from the General Fund Capital Reserve Fund. Uh, the agenda is as follows. I'll provide a brief background on the project, uh, discuss the scope of work, then the fiscal impact and alternatives, and, and lastly, um, you know, oh, oh, sorry. Then lastly, alternatives. So a little bit on the background, um, the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, otherwise known as SFUCC, operates potable water distribution network in Seminole County. And two of those pipelines are named Senatorius Pipelines Number Two and Three, uh, which is located in an easement near Seminole County's Park property, um, in San Bruno. This project consists of replacing segments of the Senatorius Pipeline Number Two, uh, which is, which is about 6,500 feet of pipelines that they're replacing in San Bruno near, and also near the Juniprop Sero Park, Park as well. And earlier this year, uh, the SFUCC's contractor Ranger Pipelines discovered the deteriorated storm drain pipeline um, and erosion as they were in the process of constructing their, uh, the pipeline through their easements near Crystal Springs Road and, and the park area. Uh, this storm drain pipeline connects, uh, to the drainage inlet, um, uh, and which can, which collects storm water from the roadway along Crystal Springs Road and discharges, you know, the flows into the creek. The CD and SFUCC, you know, we've been having discussions about this storm drain issue. And to expedite the work, uh, staff is recommended to enter into a memorandum of agreement with SFUCC so their contractor could assist in replacing existing storm drain pipeline and resolve the erosion issue since it would be the most, uh, you know, quickly, the quick approach that we, uh, we may have here. Uh, the slide shows the project location of the storm drain pipeline. Uh, as mentioned, the storm drain product collects the water from the Crystal Springs Road and as shown there, um, and into a drainage inlet and then conveys, uh, water through the pipeline across the SFUCC easement, which are shown in, in yellow, uh, there, and then to discharge it into the creek. Uh, the existing pipeline material is, um, corrugated metal pipeline. And, um, here's some photos and pictures, um, of the, um, of the area and the pipeline. The upper left picture was taken in January, uh, during the, um, one of the storm event, uh, which shows water coming out of, from various locations and, and from the pipeline. And the area near the above, you know, the black, um, screen divided there is where the SFUCC easement is located. Uh, the picture on the bottom, uh, shows the gully, uh, here, uh, or erosion area of the, um, the hillside. And again, SFUCC pipeline is located just above the, uh, the gully area. And there's a video that I wanna share with you about all, all the water coming down the, uh, the hillside here. Okay, so the scope of work, uh, for this project is to, um, first, you know, design a storm drain replacement, um, pipeline. So SFUCC requested their engineer to perform the design and determine the pipeline diameter necessary to convey the flow. Uh, Ranger Pipelines, um, will be used to assist the, in the replacement of the pipeline. And they're under contract with SFUCC and recently completed the installation of the, uh, you know, their, um, SFUCC pipelines within the easement area where the deteriorated storm drain pipeline is located. And it's familiar with the hillside terrain conditions so that, you know, they can easily change, SFUCC can easily, um, uh, request Ranger Pipelines to perform the work by, through a change order, uh, request. Uh, the project will remove and, and, uh, existing corrugated metal pipeline, replace it with a plastic storm drain pipeline to prevent future erosion. The pipeline diameter to be installed is, uh, 12 inches. Uh, the alignment is being relocated as well to ease the construction work. Um, and then lastly, the hillside will need to be stabilized as well. Uh, here's a design drawing of the improvement. Um, I know, don't worry, to kind of look at too many, um, uh, lines uh, on here, but just focus on a couple of lines on here, the yellow line and then the black line. So the existing storm drain line is shown in, you know, as yellow. And then the new storm drain line is shown as the, uh, the dark, uh, the black line there. So as you can see, the black line, that the, um, alignment, um, shown in black, it's being rerouted. Um, that's where the new pipeline, uh, is proposed to be installed. And the termination point, uh, of the, since, you know, having to go back in that existing alignment is not a feasible option since the, um, termination point is about 30 feet to the bottom of the, uh, the gully there. So. So as for the fiscal impact, the estimated construction cost is about $400,000 and its cost includes, you know, you know, design, surveying, uh, you know, environmental monitoring, pipeline construction using Ranger Pipelines, um, clearing grubbing, you know, final grading with hydroseeding, a placement of erosion blankets and, and straw lottos and, and some minor concrete work. Uh, staff is also requesting contingency of about $50,000 for any unforeseen, uh, issues that may arise during construction activities for a total budget of, uh, $450,000. Uh, the recommended funding source will be the, uh, the General Fund Capital Reserve Fund. And there is currently a balance of, uh, $4.7 million in the fund. So the annual revenue for the Stormwater Fund, you know, is, um, from, you know, the special assessment on the property, uh, which is paid through the, um, property tax roll. And most residential properties pay approximately $46 per year. Um, but, you know, this, this fund is, you know, projected to, um, have an ending balance in fiscal year 2021, 2020, 21, with a balance of $112,000. And, um, you know, the revenue is, is inadequate, you know, to support both the operating budget and, uh, stormwater capital needs. Therefore, you know, the storm, even though the Stormdrain Master Plan completed in 2014 included recommendations to improve the storm system with an estimated cost of $20 million, you know, the city hasn't been able to proceed with any of the recommended projects. So to supplement the broad budget, you know, city has been using General Fund Capital Reserve Fund, um, to pay for storm capital improvements projects in the current and prior years. However, is, you know, a, a sustainable, you know, in the long run. Um, the Stormwater Fund is also forecasted to be in the negative starting from, you know, fiscal year 21, 22 and onwards. Um, so currently staff is in the process of completing an engineering study to determine the revenues needed for the Stormwater Fund. Uh, the overall goal is to determine the appropriate stormwater assessment needed to stabilize the Stormwater Fund and to cover, cover any, you know, annual operating and capital expenses. This engineering study is still ongoing and, um, and staff anticipates to bring the item to council with a recommendation in January of, of next year. You know, if approved by council, the Proposition 218 process will likely occur sometime, you know, from March to, uh, May, uh, 2021. As for the alternatives, you know, there are two, you know, don't, you know, complete the project. Now, the future storm events will continue to roll the hillside, which will impact both the, uh, San Francisco Pipelines and the Crystal Springs, uh, Road. Um, or to direct staff to hire, uh, you know, the city contractor to complete the work, which will delay the construction activities and the cost may be higher than Ranger Pipelines. And this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Tan, for your report and presentation.
Thank you.
Um, um, questions from colleagues? Councilmember Davis?
Uh, thank you, Jimmy Tan. Another good report from you. This is, um, an unfortunate situation and, um, I think in some ways we can be grateful for the work that's already being done out there and I'm sure that there's a savings in that cost for the contract that's already out there doing that work. And so that's, that's a good thing. Um, but I think the slide, um, that you presented where, you know, we're only looking at $46 a year per, per resident for storm drain is just really insufficient. And, um, and so I really look forward to what the council can do, um, with the study session for next year. Um, does the $450,000 cost also include, I mean, in, great, by the way, great video is, you know, nothing better than really getting the live footage of what actually is happening out there. But is there also, um, costs included to, you know, not only fix the pipeline, but the area that's kind of been destroyed by the water runoff? You know, there's a cleanup mess and sort of leaving nature back to the beauty that it is.
Yeah, that's correct. And so, you know, there's a lot of areas that will be, um, hydroceded, uh, as part of this work. In addition to that, you know, where the gully is, uh, you know, that's been created by this erosion, that, you know, the cost will include, you know, providing some sort of a riprap, um, uh, you know, um, installation in that area to, to, um, to prevent further erosion, you know, into the, um, you know, the hillside.
That's probably where a big part of your cost is, is, is in that hillside, so.
That's correct.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any more, uh, hands up. Uh, Councilmember Medina?
Yes, uh, thank you for the report, uh, Director Tan. It's, it's, it's another one of those, um, un, unforeseen costs. And, um, having an old city, um, it seems like almost every year we, we, we run into one of the, one of these. So a couple of questions. The, does this project include, the costs include obtaining easements for the, for the pipe that's being relocated?
Uh, it, it doesn't actually, you know, I know that some of the, the areas is within the Seminole County lands, uh, the parks lands. So, you know, um, there hasn't been any discussions with the county to obtain an easement for our, um, uh, Stormdrain Pipeline. And there wasn't an easement for the existing Stormdrain Pipeline as well. So, yeah. But I think what would, what would definitely be in discussion with the county to figure out a way for the city to maintain the pipeline, you know, in the future.
Right, so we have, uh, 200 feet of new pipe. Um, is there an estimate of how big of that area from that? Um, is, is it getting be, gonna also be backfilled or it's just gonna be ripwrapped and, and some geotechnical person, uh, designed that for, for that repair and restoration?
Uh, Councilmember Medina, are you referring to the gully there, that area? Or are you just talking about the installation of the pipeline?
Where, where the, where the damage, uh, what needs to be stabilized? And of course, at the outfall, there has to be some kind of, uh, structure to put in place to slow down the water so it dissipates across the field. But, um, just curious on, on those costs and 12-inch pipe? And it's gonna be underground or is it, how are you guys gonna, how, what's that design entail?
Yeah, so the pipeline will be buried. It's very shallow. Uh, there's no traffic loading, um, within the area. So it's buried about, you know, about a foot below grade to the top of the pipeline. So at the termination point, you know, uh, of the pipeline, there will be some, like a T. Energy and then there will be some, uh, rocks, uh, on either side of it to slowly, um, allow the water to trickle down into the, um, you know, the creek. Uh, for the gully area, uh, for the mitigation efforts, that will be designed by engineer.
Okay. Yeah, um, and as for, um, Councilmember Davis's comments, it's, it's, it's one of those things that, um, these costs for future stormwater improvements, um, I don't, I'm scared to recall that the, is it in the tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions, $100 million for the storm? Um, I think we might have talked about it a little bit during budget, just how much work needs to be done in our storm drain system.
Yeah, so the 2014 Master Plan indicated about $20 million in improvements, um, which we haven't, you know, done any, um, of the, because just, just really no funding for us to, um, to do, to repair any or to replace or, or increase the capacity of any of our storm systems.
Got it. And, and that's separate from the storm drain, um, I'm sorry, the, the, the plan that we recently approved for the additional mitigation of stormwater, um, treatment? There was, I'm sorry, I, I don't recall the exact term, but what, with all these additional stormwater, um, treat, treatment standards, um, I think it was earlier this year, we, we went over that plan and of all the things we were talking about needing to do with that as well. Does that ring a bell?
The capture systems and stuff?
Yeah, all that stuff.
Yeah, so, you know, uh, so what we are, the trash capture system is a requirement by the Regional Board. Um, and then I know also, you know, this, all the various cities, uh, various agencies are also being requested by the Regional Board to install, you know, green infrastructure, right?
Exactly.
Yeah. And so there's, there's a lot of different requirements coming down by the, you know, the state or cities to try to, you know, prevent pollution, you know, from entering the, uh, you know, the bay. Uh, and so with that, yeah, I know, uh, all the agencies are in the same, similar, very similar situation. That's where, that's the reason why in regional, regional projects that we were looking into, you know, at the I-280, I-380, uh, created would, would help, um, a lot more so that could reduce, you know, the percentages that we're required to do as part of the GI projects. Um, but right now, I think, um, yeah, we just, we don't even have funding to do any of the GI projects. And, and there are grant availables, uh, uh, out there that we may be able to apply for if we, um, but, you know, we have to find locations and we have to maintain those too. Uh, you know, we just can't construct it and ignore those GI locate.
Well, just, so basically just another example of how these mandated projects put these additional costs on the city, which we have no revenue streams for. And so we're currently having to take money out of the general, general fund and, and this capital reserve in order to pay for these, for these repairs and eventual improvements. So, um, it's something that, um, no council member wants to, to talk about having to increase fees or taxes or anything, um, especially during all the, after everything the city, the cities have been going through. So, um, um, but we have to, we have to address it and, and there are consequences for, for failing to address it. So, um, um, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any more hands, uh, raised. Uh, this is an action item. It's a resolution. Any action from council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to Item Eight, uh, comments from council members. There's, there's one listed. There's, there's one listed, oral report from the 2020 League of California Cities Conference. Also, Marty was in attendance too, and we say in attendance was virtual, of course. And this was an opportunity for us to, to go into some seminars. It was different, right? I, I didn't participate in any of the evening activities. But, but again, one of, some of the interests I had were just, there were a lot of COVID-related sessions and seminars. There was also one that was very interesting from another community that was just about the process on development and projects and how to bring forward and bring through the community and various stages on how they. There was, as a voting delegate, there was one resolution, and it requires a separate login, I guess. And long story short, out of that resolution, there was discussion. It required 239 persons to be online in order to vote, and we had 237. Hence, the resolution could not be enacted with more than advisory. So, sure. But, but let me turn it over to Councilmember Medina at some additional thoughts.
Yeah, Mayor Medina, it was, it was definitely interesting doing it remotely. They didn't have Zoom. They had something a little different, which I had a little trouble following on my iPad. But nonetheless, a lot of interesting provocative seminars, a high focus on the racial equity across the state. Again, more housing laws and requirements. And there, there was two really interesting ones. The, from our neighbor in Burlingame about how to build community support for housing projects. They were really successful about getting out in front of the problem and, and helping educator, educate their community on why the housing is so important. And I'm hoping that we can maybe piggyback along that way that they did things. But it was, it was, it was a good event to attend to. It was a lot of, of online watching and, and so, but I think, I think, hopefully, they'll figure out to, to be able to continue recording those so other council members are, hopefully, at some point, the public could go ahead and just see what, what happens with, at these conferences. So overall, it was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council members this evening? Well, Marty, Councilmember Medina, since you've just finished, I'm going to go to you, please.
Sure. Couple things. This Thursday is the second, second harvest food distribution at Bel Air. You can, you can sign up in advance or you can just show up. It's a pretty steady line of up to 200 people to, to get some needed groceries. At Bel Air School Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00. The only other thing is, is you might have noticed, I, I have a beard. It's part of, of something that's called Movember. It's an annual event that promotes men's health issues, and, and they encourage the men to, to go, go ahead and grow a beard or a mustache. And their focus is on men's health and prostate cancer and, and mental health issues. So if you go to Movember, so it's November with an M, dot com, and you can check it out and get some education on how to improve the health for the men in your life. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any other hands up under council comments. We're going to go ahead and end with just acknowledging, of course, tomorrow, which is Veterans Day, which unfortunately at the cemetery due to COVID-19, that is not possible as in years past. However, they do plan to put out a video as they did with Memorial Day, and that's available online. But obviously, my understanding is there's about 27,000 veterans in Seminole County. I've got that from Warren Slocum, so that's probably got any of that data. But I think tomorrow is a day for all of us, all Americans, to honor and thank our veterans. And that's to acknowledge your bravery and sacrifice that all the men and women have given over the years to, to us and to this country. So I will close with that, and I want to wish everybody, hopefully it doesn't get too wet for you, but a good rest of the week and hopefully we'll be seeing you around, safe distance with masks. All right, everybody, we're going to adjourn the meeting to the next regular scheduled city council meeting, which will be on November the 24th, 2020. Enjoy and thank you, everybody. Good night.